Good evening, everybody. Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975, this meeting was noticed, was sent to the Asbury Park Press on October 12, 2021, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press the issue on October 14, 2021. All municipal clerks of the captives, the boroughs within the Freehold Regional District have been duly notified, and the requirements of this posting have been there on October 12, 2021. Please rise and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need more space.
You're kind of breathing on me there, Mr. Bruno.
I'm sorry, this is very close quarters. If everybody would stand, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Xavieran Powell-Whitney, an Alton High School senior who died tragically in a car accident. Thank you. Mrs. Scott, do we have any changes to the executive agenda?
Which set one, Mr. President? In addition to the exception noted for number three, the board also discussed a HIV appeal.
May I have a motion? To approve the minutes of April 7, 2022, the regular board meeting? May I have a motion?
Motion.
I hear two. Mr. Lavin?
Yes.
Second?
Mr. Perici.
Mr. Perici, you have a second?
It was either me or Mrs. Higley, your choice.
Okay, you're tied. Okay, Mr. Perici. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno? Mr. Perici?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno? Yes. Just to remind you that folks, communications are on file at the office of the Board Secretary. We're going to have our superintendent report. Dr. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. And just to dovetail back to your moment of silence for the Manalton senior Xavieran Powell-Whiting. You know, that accident occurred over spring break. It ultimately involved students from four different high schools, but local communities. So there's a lot of families that are grieving and hurting. The Manalton administration did an excellent job. It's unfortunate in this day and age, but school systems have become very effective in dealing with tragedy, which is not the business that you want to be in. But certainly, our condolences go out to the Powell-Whiting family and that entire community. It's been a long couple of weeks. Just a couple of things tonight is obviously the public presentation of the budget. It's the culmination of, really, the budgeting process doesn't ever fully stop. It's just kind of cyclical, and you're really working toward the budget all year long. And I do, Mr. Boyce will do his presentation in a moment, but I do want to thank Trish and Debs here and members of Sean's office, who do a phenomenal job putting this together. I'm sure the board members, you know, it's not always the norm to receive a budget booklet like Mr. Boyce puts together, which I think takes a lot of really complex phenomena and breaks it down in very digestible manner and in an easy-to-understand manner for the laborers, who's not necessarily always dealing with the financial end of the house. So, Sean, thank you for that work. You know, the dominant theme of our budget is obviously S2. The past several years and the next subsequent years, it will all be around S2. And I do think that we're making some progress from an advocacy standpoint about bringing awareness to what is happening in school districts. So just today, at the Senate Assembly Ed testimony, a number of legislators from across the state were sounding the alarm about the harmful impacts of S2, how some districts like ours are facing a financial cliff. And so it is permeating the conversation at the state legislature, which is where it really needs to permeate, right? Senator Bill Powell has sponsored legislation to establish a school funding formula evaluation task force to take a look at the school funding formula itself. That's supposed to be evaluated every three years or so. It's really not. It was never fully implemented. We know, based on some of our advocacy efforts, it's the reason we're in a lawsuit against the Department of Ed, by which we've prevailed at this point in time and are still waiting on the sort of the secret formula in a digestible and in a manner that we can actually process it and make sense of it. So in the midst of all of that, which is somewhere north of $25 million drawdown, this district has still managed to expand opportunities for students. We've managed to implement an international backalorian program that we grew out of Freehold Township High School back under Ms. Higley's watch several years ago, and expand that to Howe High School. We took a $500,000 grant from the Department of Ed and expanded our CTE program, our web design program, our health professions pathway to multiple high schools across the district. And so even though we faced that sort of a financial tsunami due to S2, I'm proud of the work that we're doing here. We are still providing an exceptional education for the students we serve. And to put some of this in perspective from a cost, and Mr. Boyce and I were talking this morning. So there are 31 regional high school districts in the state of New Jersey. 31 districts just like ours. Same format, same structure. Not necessarily same size, right, but same structure. 31. So we have an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of like, what does it cost to run a high school-only district? And of those 31 districts, the average cost per pupil post-audit is $18,433. It's the average cost per pupil in those 31 high school districts. The Freehold Regional High School District, cost per pupil post-audit, is $14,560. $3,800 less than the cost of the average high school district in the state of New Jersey. This is the public budget presentation. One of the sort of areas that the public can sometimes get prickly about are administrative costs, right? Those administrative costs are out of control. Well, in the Freehold Regional High School District, the administrative costs are 31% lower than the average of those 31 districts. So we're educating kids cheaper. We have fewer administrative costs, and we're being cut $25 million, and we're still delivering what I would argue is a first-rate educational experience for our kids. So I don't know, and Mr. Boyce will frame this with some specific examples, but I'm not certain what else we need to do here before the state wakes up and says, you know, "We're not going to allow districts to fall off a financial cliff," right? That we borrowed $4 billion from the federal government. We got billions more in federal money. We could actually keep every district whole this year. The governor's initial budget proposal with $20 million in stabilization aid is a slap in the face to the 100 school districts that are being cut during a pandemic. He should be embarrassed, period, because he could keep everybody whole. I'm hoping that that stabilization aid gets increased, because it was $50 million last year, and it would be the swipe of a pen, basically, to keep every district whole from being cut post-pandemic. We sat there in our board meeting tonight and talked about the increase in student mental health needs, the increase in student disciplinary infractions, the pressure that it's put on our staff at all levels of the organization, and how we're all basically treading water to try and do what's right by kids. And the folks there in Trenton are cutting us in the middle of that. So anybody who doesn't reach out to your state legislature, your town council members, to reach out to your assembly folks, your senate folks, and the governor's office directly, we all can't sit by complicit, right? We all have to take action. And so our difficulty as a high school-only district is people come into our system, parents, community members, students. They're only in our system for four years. We're not a K-12. So by the time a student comes in in ninth grade, parents may or may not be aware of what S2 is doing to this school district. They may have some inkling, but then next thing you know, that student's a sophomore and a junior, then they're parent. And so they don't necessarily feel it or absorb it or embrace it in the same way that you might in a K-12 when that child is traveling through a 12-year trajectory in a public system, right? And so our advocacy efforts have to just be that much more extreme to make the case. I am hoping, Senator Bill Powell's legislation does give me hope that there will be a change. What Sean and I have done for multiple years now is basically say, "How can we figure out how best to kick the can down the road to prevent as many layoffs and things like that as possible before somebody in Trenton wakes the hell up to help the school system?" Right? So with that being said, Mr. Boyce, I'll turn it over to you for your budget presentation.
And I also would like to thank Mr. Boyce and his staff. This board got their budget information last week, and a lot of us called him with questions. And I want to thank you and your staff. You did a great job with it. Thank you.
So I think Dr. Sampson hit some really critical points here about this particular budget. And as we walk through this, it's a good opportunity to understand this budget in the context of the more global scale of S2 state aid, the impact of S2, the cuts, and how that reach extends into other areas of our operation, which I think it's important to understand the cause and effect of that. But as Dr. Sampson mentioned, this budget does provide for the continuation of those programs and services, and it maintains the bank-free buck in all of the metrics that the state puts out to compare school districts with each other. It also aligns COVID needs with non-recurring COVID resources. And by that I mean federal aid that school districts receive under the American Rescue Plan. So our utilization of that is designed to dissipate along with what we are hopeful that the COVID needs that Dr. Sampson mentioned dissipate along with that. But it also, as we move through the budget discussion here tonight, it also reflects our evolving approach to how we design a school budget, how we manage risk, how we continue to respond to the economic legislative environments and the changes that by and large are outside of our control. Now, that's part of the nature of the business, but there are some things that we think that we can have some influence on that will keep this district on the course that it has been on and what the community expects. So that's what we're looking to accomplish during this, so this 2223 budget in that more global context. And I'm going to start with a slide of revenues. And I want to do that because I think it's a good time to just structurally, for school districts, how is it organized, right? And it's a fund system. The general fund is the budget as you know it. This annual school budget is 95% of our activity happens in there. But there's also a special revenue fund. And here is federal, state, local grants that have a very specific targeted purpose, okay? They're intended to supplement the programs contained in the general fund. And then also the debt service fund. And for a few years now, the debt service fund has been vacant. The debt that the district did have, it wrapped up. It was used for building Coats Neck High School and some other additions. Wrapped up a few years ago. But the referendum that passed this November, the first payment of those 20-year bonds lands in here. So the debt service fund is active again. But by and large, our conversation tonight and where you need to put your focus is in the general fund. And really, the best place to start there, if we can move to the next slide, is going to be state aid. So you can see the scale of state aid with respect to the overall general fund budget. So the overall general fund budget is some $200 million, and state aid is $30 million of that, which is a fairly small portion of it altogether. I just want to, I think it's worth checking in on how the state, the methodology that the state used in going about distributing state aid to the various districts. So if we can move to the next slide. And I know many of you have heard this before, but it's still worthwhile, I think, spending a moment on it here right now, the design of the distribution of state aid. So it's under the SFRA, which is the School Funding Reform Act. That came into existence in about 2009. And what the SFRA did was it approached it this way. First, what are the needs of the students? Quantify the needs of the students. That arrives at an adequacy budget, which is a number that's district-specific, and then determine how to pay for that, okay? So in quantifying the needs of the students, on a district-by-district basis, the student profile, just the quantity, the grade range, the characteristics of those students are pushed through a cost model, a universal cost model, so same model for all districts, to arrive at what that district needs. What is an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education for the students of that particular district? The next step in that process is to determine how to pay for it. First up is the local community. That's referred to as the local fair share. So what the formula does is it translates wealth indicators on a community-by-community basis into their ability to pay property taxes to fund their own education. Whatever is remaining in order to get up to the adequacy budget is funded by state aid, okay? So that's the process, which is, I think it's a logical approach to determine what do all students need and then how is it going to be paid for, which that's determined on a district-by-district basis. So if we can move to the next slide, Trish. So for Freehold Regional, who funds adequacy? Who funds our adequacy budget? And here's a chart that represents over 10-year period the portion of the adequacy budget funded by the local taxpayer versus what's budgeted by the state. And I just think the dip in responsibility of the state is representative of the SFRA coming into play, more specifically, an amendment to that in 2019 called S2. But so that gives you a general sense of the shift in responsibility from almost all the Freehold Regional taxpayer to nearly all of it. 68% to 95% or so. But let's take a closer look at exactly how they arrived at that. So I've shown this chart before, and it's the determination of local fair share. Remember, that comes first, and then the state aid. In both charts, the red line represents what the funding formula determined was district's responsibility, and then what the remaining amount up to adequacy in state aid would be. Those are the red lines. The green lines are reality. That's what has actually happened over this span of time. So for the local fair share, you can see just by the movement of the red line there, there's some volatility in the determination of what a community's ability to pay for it. And the lawsuit that Dr. Sampson referred to earlier goes right to that point. And specifically, it is what variables does the state use to translate those wealth indicators, which is property value and income, into a community's ability to pay for its own education? And it's been very inconsistent, and our request in this lawsuit is very simple. Explain how you arrive at the variables that convert those wealth indicators into ability to pay. We've been pursuing that for more than a year at this point. We'll continue to pursue it, but it's been very difficult to get that information from the state as to exactly how they arrived at those variables. But regardless, our property taxes increase has been at 2% in recent years, which is per a unrelated law that caps the tax levy increase at 2%. So looking at the first chart here, the local fair share, the SFRA says the community should be paying the red amount, some $20 million more than they're actually paying, which is the property tax levy as it currently stands. So that gap turns into, the way that manifests itself as a problem is that the district is not able to meet the adequacy budget, okay? So we are $11.4 million below adequacy, which is by definition the amount of money necessary to provide a thorough and efficient education. That problem is expanding. Last year was $4.8 million, and the year before it was slightly below that. So it's a growing problem. On the other side, state aid side, and you can see right around 2019, the state aid starts to drop off significantly. We have gone from 2019 to here in 2023, $51 million in state support, down to $30 million in state support. That's five years of the seven-year phase-in of S2. So two more years to go, but the majority of the damage is done. And we estimate to be at about $25 million when it's all said and done a couple of years from now. And some of the advocacy work that Dr. Sampson and others from districts who are in a similar position have done is to make the very case that if we can't meet adequacy, if we can't meet our adequacy budget, then that is, by law, by the SFRA, the definition of insufficient funds to provide that thorough and efficient education. So it's an interesting dynamic, because the reductions in state aid, the reach of that is into other areas of our revenue. Property taxes, fund balance, how much of our surplus are we using to support a budget? And our ability to set aside funds in reserves to maintain our facilities, therefore creating a need for a referendum. So the reach is not only the reduction of the amount of money available to support the education programs that we have, but it also has consequences beyond that. For property taxes, move to the next slide. Take a look at this for just a moment. It's by community, and it's the projected estimated tax rates for the new year for the Freehold Regional portion of your property tax bill. So what should jump out at you is reductions up and down that chart. And while that fares well for this presentation, that's only part of the calculation for what the amount of property taxes you'll end up having to pay, right? Because what's happening is, under a new program, under a law that was passed in 2013 called the Assessment Demonstration Program, the evaluation of properties in communities across the state are being updated annually to reflect market value. And that's done in over a five-year span, 20% of the properties at a time. But my point is that the assessed value of your properties are going up. And although your tax rate may be going down, the net impact of that may still be a decrease or an increase. What you need to do is you have to look at this in terms of your property and your property tax bill to understand how your assessment is moving, and then match that with how the rate is moving to determine what is the actual impact on your household, okay? But the impact of tax rate, the tax rate changes under this budget are reflected in that slide. So I highlighted some of the other areas that are impacted by S2, and I mentioned them, but I want to dip into that a little bit more. Fund balance, which is synonymous with surplus, is an area that we've gone to over these five years since S2 has been implemented to help offset the reductions in state aid, because for all of those years, the reduction in state aid is greater than the increase in the property tax, right? We can't backfill that cut with property taxes at the 2% cap of increase in the tax levy. So fund balance and going to surplus has been one of the strategies to buy time and maintain the district at the level the community expects. But that well will run dry, and we are approaching that. We're accepting more and more risk as we put together these annual budgets. And one of the strategies, one of the techniques that we're using is increasing our tolerance for risk by having less surplus on hand. We are, once again, relying on surplus to help fill the holes in the budget that we're seeing here. Another area is that you'll see that we're adding $300,000 for some capital projects to this budget. That money is coming from the facility reserves. So outside of the annual budget, there are reserves, designated areas to accumulate funds for big-ticket capital projects. And the way that money gets into that reserve is at the end of each year, the amount of money that is remaining in appropriations can be transferred or a portion of that. And that's something that this district has consistently done, and that's evidenced by not having a referendum for more than 20 years, because we've been able to provide for roof replacements, boiler replacements, and the like over time by responsibly accumulating money in a reserves.
So do you believe we're not going to use the fund balance or the facilities reserve at all? Do you have to be...
So Mr. Bruno's question is, in an ideal scenario, would you want to use fund balance or the reserves at all? Well, I think the reserves need to be used in order to accommodate, it's a large district with a lot of facilities in order to maintain it at a proper level. The problem is not the use of it, it's funding it, all right? And the levels that we have in our facility reserves are not where they need to be. You know, there's certainly room for improvement. And the reason for that is that we have not been able to deposit money in reserves at the end of any given years, because we allow it to go into surplus, because we know that we're going to need to use it for the subsequent year's budget, right? So that's one of the impacts that S2 has on other areas of the operation. For this budget, the three small projects that are included are replacement of emergency generator, the replacement for one of the high school's PA system, and also stage lighting improvements at one of the other schools. So they're smaller scale, but again, this is something that in the long run, the reserves are not going to be able to do what they're intended to do if we're not able to fund them on a regular basis. So that was worth noting, I think, as another area of impact of S2. I also want to talk a little bit about the special revenue fund. And this is the American Rescue Plan COVID, federal COVID money that has gone out to districts. We are using that in this year's budget to do a few things. The issues that Dr. Sampson outlines, the impact on students as a result of COVID, that has caused students to need services from an out-of-district placement. And for the short term, the near term at least, and longer in some cases. So we are using our money to support some of those COVID-driven placements. We're also using it to reestablish our RACE program, which is a Twilight program, which is a replacement for an out-of-district placement for students that are still acclimating back to the structure of school day. And we're also using it for six school and community liaison officers. So our security guards that we have in our buildings that assist the administration in just maintaining order in the building. So all of those areas are aligned to COVID. And as COVID, the impact of COVID dissipates, this money will dissipate. It's a nonrecurring revenue. It's not something you receive every year. It's a one-time item, so we're trying to use it in that way. And finally, debt service fund. Again, it's the first year of payments on a 20-year bond associated with the referendum. Just a word about the referendum. Over the past several months, the district has gone out for bids and awarded contracts for work to be done this summer at all six schools. Two of the schools will be roofing work. The other four schools will be paving work. And then the following summer, it'll flip, and it'll be four schools with roofing and two schools with paving work. So the referendum work is being completed over a two-year period of time. But the bond that was issued to fund that work is being repaid over 20 years, and this is the first year of that payment. You can see that there is some state support on that. But the majority of it, 65% or so, is through a tax levy. That impact on the tax levy is 0.37%. So our tax levy increase this year was 2.37%. The 2% is on the general funds increase in the property tax levy, and the 0.3% is associated with the debt. So those are some of the other areas that are either directly or indirectly being impacted by our financial position, the genesis of which is our state funding. So if we move to the next slide. On the appropriations side, as Dr. Sampson said, continuation of services and improvements in certain areas. This budget provides for the replacement of teacher laptops for three of our schools, for the capital projects that I had mentioned earlier, a wheelchair van, some buildings and grounds equipment. So the maintenance of our operation is included and provided for in here. As you can see, the three blue slices, the majority of our money is in the area of our core business, and that's direct instruction to students. The red and the pink slice next to that represents support service, student support services, and that's everything from guidance to the nurse's office, media center, child study team, all of those things that are necessary to position the student as well as possible to receive the direct instruction. And then just the other organizational infrastructure areas are carved out, administration, transportation, and facilities. And, you know, all of these areas, and I'd just like to compliment my colleagues, the administrative team here, who are responsible for designing their area of the operation, but still within, aligned to the district-wide view, which is represented in the strategic plan. But understand that there are difficult decisions being made at all of those levels as well as resources are limited for each administrator in their respective areas. So that's difficult work, and it's a critical part of assembling a budget for a school district. But overall, we remain the efficient. I think if we move to the next slide. So I had mentioned earlier that, you know, the regional system does work, effective in terms of the scope of opportunities that this district has compared to any other district. I would say pick any other district. And the magnet programs, the services, the level, the offerings in athletics, and extracurricular activities, I really think that we would match up and exceed any other district that wants to try and match up with us on the high school level. And it's being done in a very efficient manner, as you can see by that chart. So by all performance metrics and spending metrics, you know, these are, the regional system is an effective system for a school district, which is even, it just begs the question, why would you start to defund the school system that can demonstrate the best bang for your buck, the return on your investment? So that's an important takeaway from this as well. So finally, the work ahead of us is in some core areas here to just understand the pervasive effect of S2 has on our operation and plan accordingly, to manage our tolerance for risk because that is not, there is an end to tolerance for risk. I would typically and have typically been more conservative, but that's changed over the last several years. We don't have the luxury of, you know, having a low tolerance for risk. We need to raise our tolerance for risk, and we have as we've moved through the budget since S2 was implemented. It's to understand the inevitable contraction of our programs and services based on the trajectory that we are, which finally makes our continued advocacy work super important so that we can have our voices heard and influence legislation that recognizes and rewards districts or funds districts appropriately that can provide this level of opportunity at the price point that we do. So all in all, that's the 2022-23 budget within a larger context. And I'd like to, Mr. Bruno, I open it up to the board for any questions or comments first, and then we'll move to the community for some. Mr. Bruno, I grab the microphone. Thank you for reminding me of that. And Mr. Bruno's comment was how important the referendum was. You know, our thanks goes out to the community for supporting the referendum. It was a $14.5 million referendum for work that is imminent. Roofing, these are not the types of things you can take a pass on. And if not for the referendum, those costs would be borne by this operating budget, which would, of course, squeeze out some of the programs and services that we can continue to make available, and on a significant scale squeeze that out. So yeah, that was priority one of, you know, critical and urgent work in roofing and paving that was going to get done one way or the other. Referendum pass is being done there rather than in here. And, you know, thanks to the community, I think that was the best decision for the district. Any other members of the board? Questions? Comments? Hearing none, I would invite any members of the community to the podium if there are any questions and comments on the budget itself. So hearing none. Per the agenda, Mr. Bruno.
So let's vote on E3. The adoption of the 2022-23 school budget. I have a motion to approve E3. Mrs. Capiello, second. Mrs. Higley, second. We have discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lattman?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno? Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Voice. Mr. Bruno, just one last piece to my report. I'd like to welcome Mr. Acetola, former board president, who's out in the audience. Thanks for coming back, Mr. Wright.
I want to speak during public session.
So, Mr. Voice, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. There are, Mr. Bruno. And I'll ask Mr. Tiscana to supplement this as needed. G12 is being added to the agenda. It's in the back of the room, but I'll read it for the benefit of the group. Approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education and the Academic Supervisors Association. Be it resolved that the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education adopts and ratifies the memorandum of agreement between the board and the Freehold Regional High School District Academic Supervisors Association dated April 28, 2022.
In addition to that, there is an additional agenda, item J3, that will be motion to adopt modified HIV findings as discussed in executive session.
Okay, so public participation? Carl, I think you're the only one, so.
And there are no board reports, so we can go right to public participation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carl Acetola from Colts Neck. And before I start, I want to take the opportunity, Mr. Brappman, did you get that Ronald Reagan nomination for an award? Okay, that's good because I remember giving you the first presidential award as the most outstanding person in the district with your wrestling abilities and overall management style. So I'm happy that the Ronald Reagan nomination did come through. That's the first step. I know, I'm kind of lost this way to start. Why don't I start with S2? I think that every meeting, Mr. Sampson brings up the importance of fighting S2 formula. And I don't even know what the S2 formula is. Maybe, Mr. Bruno, somebody could explain if the governor has, or Department of Education has responded to the request as to how the formula is formed. And they one time said it was proprietary, which is ludicrous in my mind. Since we're the taxpayers and we should know how the formula is formulated. So did they ever respond effectively?
We have prevailed in the second round of the courts, and we're waiting to see what that next response will be. We were initially, we were initially given the algorithm itself minus any of the data that needed to be loaded into it to actually understand how it worked. And even though we, and by we, I mean the Freehold Regional High School District and the other six districts that are joined together in this lawsuit, we couldn't, even if we had hired experts who could do it, they couldn't back work into it to understand it. So we went back to court and challenged them under the auspices of not fulfilling the Oprah request that we had put forth. And we prevailed in that manner, and we're still in a holding pattern to see whether, what will or will not be turned over as a result of that victory.
Well, here's what I think it really comes down to. And it's not a cynical response I'm giving here. What I think it comes down to is, we live in the more rural section of New Jersey. We pay a lot of property tax. However, more votes come from the urban sections of New Jersey. So the politicians like to support the urban sections while at the same time, you have the best school district easily and by far in the state of New Jersey. So what do we have to do? We have to campaign very effectively and get the word out there in the best way we can to notify, you know, everyone in Monmouth County about these cuts. And I would suggest a big publicity campaign because we found out how devastating it is when kids are not going to school and are not having the programs through COVID. And we need these programs. And it breaks my heart. I got them in a financial position. I don't have to worry about ever working again. But to see some of these young kids, the kids to me, the teachers, I mean, lose their job or get a pink slip, it's just heartbreaking. And we can't allow that to happen. And again, the only reason I believe it's happening is because there are more votes in the urban areas. So I'd like to see, what do you call it, Mr. Brappman? You know football, the Green Bay sweep? What is it? Green Bay sweep? Yeah, to get to that quarterback and bring the, make him fumble, and let's bring the money back to just our fair share. That's what I'm saying. And one more thing, one final thing, is Sean was talking about the operating and capital reserve. What people forget is that, and you didn't mention it, Sean, I wouldn't. Boy, I take credit for everything I can. I mean, you know, I'm not a modest guy like Mr. Brappman, but... So I always say what I accomplished. But you accomplished, how many millions of dollars in savings through that capital fund program, where the energy fund program?
Yeah, the ESIP program.
ESIP, that's.
Energy program was very successful in, you know, converting energy savings into the money used to purchase the, replace the HVAC equipment and lighting and so forth that then generated the savings to pay for it. So yeah, the ESIP program worked out well for us.
Do you know the dollar amount ballpark?
Not at all.
I think it was about 5 million, I think.
No, it was 20, close to 20 million.
Oh, wow, so what do I know? I should have checked in my figures with Mr. Brappman, and I would have known. Okay, so anyway, that's about all I have to say. I do want to thank the board for pivoting so often during this COVID response and opening the schools when other schools wanted to remain closed and setting up everything on a minute's notice. I don't know how that was possible. And I just thank the teachers and administrators of each high school. So, and welcome, Mrs. Finelli. You've been doing a stellar job there for Colts, thank you.
Thank you. Stay well.
Thank you, Ms. Acetola.
Okay, we're going to go to G1 through G11. It's our personnel and negotiations. Unless you have something to add?
Just also in G12.
Yes. I'm going to abstain from that.
Yes, okay.
All right, so personnel and negotiations. I have a motion to approve items G1 through G12. Mrs. Lattman, I need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Capiello, board discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except G12 and on that, I abstain.
Yes, on everything except G12, which I abstain.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, except for G12.
And that's an extension, right?
That's an extension.
G12. Okay. We're going to do H, Program Operations, Buildings, Transportation and Physical Plant. It's G1, it's H1 through H3. Now I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Higley, Mr. first. Mr. Parisi and Mrs. Higley. Do we have any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to do J, J1 through K1. It's Educational Programs and Administration. I have a motion?
Who?
I hear Mrs. Capiello?
Second.
That was first, second, Mrs. Lavin? Board discussion? Not hearing any? Roll call, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Bruno, what? This resolution is for?
J1.
J1, Educational Programs and Administration.
K1.
J1 through K1.
It's also inclusive of J3 as well.
Okay.
J3's in there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to do J, J1 through K1. It's Educational Programs and Administration. I have a motion?
Who?
I hear Mrs. Capiello?
Second.
That was first, second, Mrs. Lavin? Board discussion? Not hearing any? Roll call, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Bruno, what? This resolution is for?
J1.
J1, Educational Programs and Administration.
K1.
J1 through K1.
It's also inclusive of J3 as well.
Okay.
J3's in there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Okay. You guys good?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to go into, any old business the board would like to discuss? Hearing no old business, any new business the board would like to discuss?
Mr. Bruno, the only thing I'd like to say is that the Monmouth County School Board Association is having a meeting in the second week of May, and I will forward details to the board if anyone wants to attend.
Is it May 12?
I believe it's May 12, but I believe.
Tuesday?
I believe our, our next board meeting is on the 12th.
No, our board meeting is 12.
Same night?
It's the same night, so I would imagine that may be difficult for us to attend, so. Other than that, the only thing I want to say is I just want to thank our administration for all the hard work they did on our budget, year in, year out. They're always very transparent with us. They, you know, they, they bring in a, a, one of the best auditors available to, you know, explain everything to us. And I'm just very impressed with the level of engagement they have with the board and sharing, sharing information and just being completely transparent about the whole process. And I just, I want to thank them.
Thank you. I'm so impressed with him that he's not falling asleep. He's really interested. Okay, so that was our new business, and now we're going to go to adjournment. Now I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Lavin, second?
Second.
Second.
Big wing?
Yes.
All those in favor?
All right.
Meeting's adjourned.